Thank you very much. Good evening, welcome to the Planning Board meeting of Tuesday, March 2, 2023. This meeting is recorded and is shown on Milford TV as well.
May 2nd.
What did I say?
You said March.
Yeah, no, not wishful thinking, that's going the wrong way. May 2, 2023. With that, I will take a motion for the minutes from the last meeting. I guess I'm going out of order, I guess we should have reorganization first. For those members that weren't here last week, which Ted and Chris, we did vote on some of the reorganization, which is in the meeting minutes, but there were some committee assignments that I thought was important to make sure all the members were here to vote on. So in your packet, you'll see as agenda item number one, we have four committees that we put, that members are annually assigned to. In the package, you can also see who the members were that were the previous people in those positions. So the first one is for the MAPC SWAP representative, which is Metropolitan Area Planning Council. The town, as a member of Metropolitan Area Planning Council, has one seat on that council. I've been serving as that representative for, I guess it's past three years, I think, three or four years. I have no problems continuing that if that's a pleasure of the board, but there is, those meetings, there's usually about four meetings plus some additional meetings during the year that they're actually going back live. The next meeting, which I've signed up for, is the end of this month, and that will be in Boston as a live meeting. Previously, they were teams meeting, as most all-state meetings were.
Make a motion, have Joe Caligoni as the SWAP, MAPCP rep-
Motion to have me as the SWAP MAPC representative, seconded by Ted. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. The Fair Housing Committee representative, that was Joe Marias, the last year. I don't know if you had any meetings with that or not, Joe?
We haven't, but I was contacted that I'll be attending the next scheduled meeting.
Uh huh.
So I'm looking forward to that. And I don't mind participating.
I make a motion that we have Joe Marias as our Fair Housing Committee rep.
Motion to have Joe as the Fair Housing Committee rep. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Chris. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous at five. Open Space Advisory Committee, this was Brian Cole. I don't remember if he had attended any meetings. Of course, with COVID, it made it a little more difficult, but I'm not sure if there were any meetings of the Open Space Advisory Committee, considering we're looking at redoing or updating the master plan. That may be a committee that may become active, it may not, considering we have switched a lot of property over the Conservation Commission already, but that being said, I'm not sure if there's a member that would like to serve on that committee and certainly would take nominations for that.
I would be interested in that.
Make a motion that we have Ted DePaul serve as the liaison for the Open Space Advisory Committee.
Motion to have Ted serve as our Open Space Advisory Committee liaison. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Joe Marias. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll take the vote. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous at five. I'll look at our Policy Task Force, Babe has been our liaison for that. There has been, I know there were meetings, I don't know if there were any last year, but there were ones previously. And again, that may come up as part of the master plan, depending on what issues come up through that or not, but I know Babe did serve on that, and I will take nominations for that position.
Yes.
Nominate Babe to be our Public Art Policy Task Force Liaison.
Motion to have Babe be the Policy Art Task Force Liaison. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Chris. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll take the vote. All those in favor of having Babe as the Policy, as the Public Art Policy Task Force Liaison will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous at five. Thank you. Continued endorsements, you have that, right Larry? You have all of those, okay. With that, we can go to the meeting minutes from the last meeting. Now I'll take a motion to accept the meeting-
I make a motion we accept the minutes of the last meeting.
Motion by Babe to accept the meeting minutes from our last meeting of April 18th. Do I have a second?
I second that motion.
Seconded by Ted. All those will signify by-
No.
He can. It's procedural. He can actually do it, it's procedural, yes. Yeah, I-
Yeah, it's just ministerial.
Yeah, it's an administrative thing, so he can do the second. They can vote on them.
Okay.
We had checked with town council, so you can, even though you weren't here, you can vote on them. A lot of times, I know Pat didn't or would take them as abstentions, but we can just do them as, yeah. So Ted seconded. Any further discussion on the meeting minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting the meeting minutes will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous at five. With that, we have, it is past 7:02, we have a public hearing for the application of this board to amend Section 2.1 of the zoning bylaw related to the zoning map and to the Water Resource Protection District map, and to amend Section 7.4 of the zoning bylaw relating to the Water Resource Protection District. I'll just go through-
Can you read the notice?
Yeah, you can read the notice, Larry.
Milford Planning Board Notice of Public Hearing on Tuesday, May 2, 2023, in Room 3 of Milford Town Hall, 52 Main Street. The Milford Planning Board will, at the time designated, conduct public hearings regarding the following. 7:02 PM, application of the Planning Board to amend Section 2.1 of the zoning bylaw relating to the zoning map and to the Water Resource Protection District map, and to amend Section 7.4 of the zoning bylaw relating to the Water Resource Protection District. The full application and/or maps of the above items are available for public inspection at the Office of Planning and Engineering, Town Hall 52 Main Street, Milford, Mass. During business hours, all interested parties may express their views at the above scheduled hearings. This notice was published in the Milford Daily News on 4/18 and 4/25.
Thanks, Larry. So Article 17, as it'll appear in the warrant, is to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw relating to the zoning map and to the Water Resource Protection District map as follows. By replacing in Section 2.1, Establishment of Districts, the third paragraph of Section 2.1.1 with the following new paragraph. The boundaries of these districts are defined and bounded on the maps accompanying this bylaw entitled Town of Milford Zoning Map, updated October 2018, and Town of Milford Water Resource Protection District, updated May 2023, which maps, in all explanatory matter thereon, are hereby made a part of this bylaw and are on file with the Milford Town Clerk. And by adding in Section 7.4, Establishment and Delineation of Water Resource Protection District, at the end of the first sentence of subsection 7.4.1, the words "updated May 2023," and by deleting in Section 7.4, Establishment and Delineation of Water Resource Protection District, the last sentence of section, subsection 7.4.2. And in addition, by replacing in Section 7.4, Establishment and Delineation of Water Resource Protection District, the text of subsection 7.4.2A with the words, where the boundaries of the Water Resource Protection District 1, WR1, do not coincide with said street or town lines, or are not locatable in any other way from the Water Resource Protection District map, boundaries shall be determined by scale from the map. If we go back, I'll read Larry's, I'll just read part of Larry's original note to the board, but just so we, for those, especially for the new members. The Water Resources Department, the Water Department has been notified by the Mass DEP that with recent installation of the new Godfrey Brook wells, the Town of Milford must now update their Water Resource Protection Overlay Zoning District to remain in compliance with Mass DEP's wellhead protection requirements. As indicated in the attached documentation, the updated recharge areas for the new wells are only slightly larger than the current WR1 overlay zone, and then only in a few isolated areas. Nonetheless, to fully cover the entirety of the updated area, a formal zoning amendment will be necessary. So for the new members, this is sort of something that's been directed by DEP, not sort of is directed by DEP. The town had a water resource protection area prior to this. DEP has effectively mapped out the new area. This board had directed staff to go through and update the zoning bylaw to reflect that and put that into the, into an article at this town meeting. Part of the other reason, not only to protect the water resource area, but it's also something that the town needed to do to make sure we were in compliance, so that we, if there were grants or whatever, DEP has any input. If we're not in compliance, they can also knock us off for those types of things. So we wanted to make sure we were in compliance with DEP moving forward, and also, obviously, to protect the water resources of the town. With that, I'll turn it over to Dave, just to, you know, he can give us some highlights, but Dave's the manager at the Milford Water Company.
Yes, thank you.
Department.
Water Department.
Water Department, yeah. It really does just come down to just more or less clarifying and cleaning up what was already there. There was a lot of bounds, meets and bounds, so it wasn't as clearly mapped out, if you will. So Larry and Liz and I kind of worked out a good area that kind of encompasses what was needed for the, so we added three new wells down at Godfrey Brook. They're called replacement wells, but they're actually additional wells, so the zone kind of changed slightly. It wasn't a huge change overall when you looked at the original map to the map that DEP was looking for. So it wasn't a huge addition, and again, we just went a little bit further on some spots, just for clarification and to kind of give us some good bounds, so it was easier to see. And overall, it's just going to obviously improve the protection of the resource at Godfrey Brook and also up at Diller Street and the wells up there as well.
So previously, a lot of this was done by meets and bounds. With this, we've really gone to trying to make them easily identifiable on the map itself, and if not, it goes back to the map itself, as opposed to trying to do meets and bounds, which was somewhat difficult out, obviously, in the field and for people to look at and know exactly where we were or weren't. The idea was that people could get on this and much easier to see whether they were in the Water Resource District or not. So that was one of the other things that was done as part of this. Any questions from the, you can take a look, they're in our packet. You see the maps here, but there is a map that is the before, the existing map, the proposed map, but probably more importantly, if you can find that one, Liz.
The ugly there.
Is the compared map that shows the areas in yellow, and you can see them in there, the major areas.
Biggest area.
Yep.
Small area here, small area here. So we only expanded, we didn't contract any of the existing area. We expanded it to cover all of what was needed.
Yep.
Yeah, this was definitely the most substantial area.
That one related to the wells, Babe?
It's a combination of the wells and also up at Diller Street.
Okay, yeah. So you can see the areas in yellow for the board members, those were the areas, the main areas of change.
Yeah, they were added to the existing.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, overall, the Resource Protection area itself was always really good, you know? I mean, we had a great setup, so it was very little to adjust there.
And it's also, you notice in the verbiage of Article 17, it'll be Article 17 in the warrant. The verbiage clearly is cleaning up a bunch of language, excuse me, in those two sections of the bylaw, which some of it should have been done years ago, but nonetheless, this will get everything back in order. And Dave will be able to turn the water on now.
Yeah, right now, it's a quarter, it's part of the order of conditions.
He's waiting to turn the spigot, but DEP won't let him until we get this done.
I guess a question on mine, because I was just thinking back and I saw, the area that effectively is part of the Bellingham, is that, did we change that already, or is this part of this as well, or?
No, I think actually, the one, the largest area in this map-
Right.
-would kind of relate to that, but-
It does cover a little bit of it, but, yeah.
That area.
This is the Bellingham.
Right.
And we're not covering that-
We're doing this, okay.
We're not covering that by this map yet.
We can go back to that and do that separately. We wanted to make sure we get this done, so Dave's plant's protected.
So the board members that haven't been here for, probably going back, I don't know when it started, I think Babe and I may be the only ones that go back to the, Bellingham has come in a number of times, the Bellingham Water Resource District actually extends into Milford. And that area to the right of that map is effectively an area that they draw water from as part of their wells, but that's the resource, the recharge area for their wells is in there. They've come through a number of times asking us to show that as a Water Resource District on our maps, and that's something that we probably will need to do moving forward, but as Larry and Liz just indicated, right now, we want to make sure that the Milford Water Department is covered and we move ahead with that, and then we probably can go back through. We've spent time on it, we've delineated to some extent, and it may be something that we take up after we get this through town meeting.
Yeah, and in the past, DEP would accept what they call best effort, so as long as you submitted a letter to the town that, you know, we're making a request that you make adjustments to the language that was always acceptable, but-
I believe it still is. So we needed to do this in order to be in compliance. Bellingham doesn't need us to do that in order to be compliant, they just need to send us a letter saying, can you do this?
They call it best efforts, and DEP does accept that.
Yeah.
Yep.
So that was part of the order.
Any questions, comments from the board?
Are we in hot water if we don't?
Yeah, Dave can't, Dave-
We're in no water.
Yeah, Dave can explain that, but-
Yeah, so part of the order of conditions for activating Godfrey Brook was to get this done.
Okay.
Now, don't get me wrong, they know, once they realize that we're in that process of moving this forward, they're not going to tell me I can't turn it on until town vote, but it is part of one of the major order of conditions that this gets resolved and cleaned up.
If we didn't, they would eventually tell us.
Yeah, they would, or they could limit the sources, you know?
Right.
Ones that are, you know, not covered now would not be allowed to be used.
Right.
Make a motion, we close the public hearing and send a favorable recommendation to the town meeting.
Motion by Babe to close the public hearing and send a favorable recommendation to town meeting. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Who's second?
Joe Marias. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous at five.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dave. 81 keys, we have non-ZBA special permit, 3 to 5 Ariana Circle Lily Bean LLC. Just so the board members are aware, these two are, the next two are pretty close to the same, except for two different lots, but they're the same request. We will take them separately, but probably minimize the amount of reading in the second time around.
Sorry for the boring memos.
So the first one is the application, request a special permit to allow for the construction of two-family dwelling on the subject property, which is 3 to 5 Ariana Circle, map 52, block 293, lot 4. 12,290 square foot lot was created by the recently approved Ariana Estates definitive plan. Proposed 44 by 50 two-family dwelling will meet the lot's setback requirements of the RA zone, as well as the additional requirements of ZBL Section 3.13 Special Permit Standards, two-family dwellings that were adopted in 2005 specifically for lots between 12,000 and 16,000 square feet in the RA zone. The building is designed to have a common entrance facing Ariana Circle, the two driveways will be connected to Ariana Circle and still meet the standards of Section 3.13. Larry's recommending that it be favorably sent to the Zoning Board of Appeals. And the, you can see the application with the, effectively going through the questions, showing that it meets. There's also a picture of the house layout that shows it meeting the standards, as well as its layout on the lot. Any questions from any members of the board?
There's three duplexes down there now, and this wasn't approved in, or was approved with the Ariana subdivision that was approved by-
The, yeah.
Lots were.
Yeah, the lots were, but in order for, each lot has to come back afterwards for a special permit from the board.
Two of the lots were over 16,000, these two were just under, yeah, between 12 and 16, which triggers a special permit.
So that's why these two are here?
I didn't even, I apologize, because I didn't even look at these parts. The drive, they're required to have two parking spaces per, I thought parking spaces couldn't be in plenty of buildings.
They're not directly between the house and the street, they're on the sides, they're off to the side, so this marginally meets the requirements.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
They're not-
I got it, I got it, okay.
Yeah. Tough to park there, and I can tell you right now, they're going to be in front of the driveway, because that's the only place they're going to, you know, they're going to end up, but they can easily show it on the-
They're really going to end up in the cul-de-sac. But anyway, I just, I just misunderstood that.
Yep. It's a pleasure of the board.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second it. Motion by Joe to approve the special permit, seconded by Ted. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll take the vote. All those in favor of the application will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous at five. The second one is for 7 through 9 Ariana Circle, and effectively, everything is exactly the same, except that lot is 12,012 square feet. Obviously, the layout is different, they're using the same building layout, whether that's exactly the same building that they put up or not, I'm, you know, obviously not totally sure, but it'll be within that block that they're showing. Everything else remains the same, comments remain the same. Again, you can take a look at the package and the layout. Any comments or questions from the board?
Make a motion, we give a favorable approval to special-
Motion by Babe to approve the application for the special permit. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Joe. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the special permit will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Also, unanimous at five.
You're actually sending a favorable report to the ZBA. The minutes will reflect that.
Yeah, the minutes will reflect that.
Right.
Why did I think that was one of the ones that we approved? Then I remembered now that you say that, as to why we didn't do that.
I added in your packet the correspondence.
Oh, yeah, just an update for those, for everybody, and also for Ted and Chris, we, the board is going through, trying to update the town master plan, which was done in 2003. Larry and I have had meetings with Metropolitan Area Planning Council. We will have a meeting next week with the Finance Committee. We had an estimate of costs to do the update to the plan, and Metropolitan Area Planning Council has indicated that they believe that that would be no more than $170,000 to complete the plan, complete the update. Expectation is that that would probably take, probably a year to do, they would be able to start that work in the fall of this year. The, that money, some of those monies may be able to be offset, part of, again, Milford being a part of Metropolitan Area Planning Council, there is some amount of money that we provide to them yearly that we can use for, call it work in kind. So that may be able to be applied to the master plan as we move forward, but they're not sure how much of that will be available and what types of grants are available, if any. We had talked about, because I know that it's come up, people may have heard, there was, the state had provided significant funding for those towns that were serviced by the MBTA or were within one town from the MBTA. Milford does not fall under that, we don't have to, the reason for that funding was that the state was also requiring those towns and cities to come up with a, effectively a plan to show, call it transit zoning, transit residential zoning, for areas that were near the stations, where they would look for densification in those areas. We don't fall into that, so we don't have to change that for our residential zoning, nor do we, which also means we're not eligible for the funding that they were, that they had available for that, which is probably a good thing, because although I'm not sure in Milford, the other thing that we talked about the last meeting was the fact that for residential zones, Milford is almost entirely built out, there is really very little that we'd be able to do. And that was part of the discussion that we've had with MAPC in terms of what they will be looking for going forward. We had asked them to make sure that the majority of their work would be looking at the downtown core, as to whether that may be an area where we allow some residential usage in the downtown core, that's now the, call it the flavor of the day, but you're seeing a lot more interaction between commercial and residential usages in those areas. And as well, you're seeing it in mixed use in a lot of the commercial and areas that are away from the downtown core. So those were the areas, the commercial, industrial, downtown core specifically, that we asked them to make sure that those areas are covered as part of this update, because we think those are the areas that really need to be addressed going forward over if this plan lasts as long as the one that we're in, the next 20 years, where we may have the most amount of changes. So anyways, that's sort of an update, we're going next week to the Finance Committee, we'll be presenting them with the $170,000, at least as a placeholder for right now. The intent is that this would go to, that we'll have a better idea of where we are, and this would go as an article to the fall town meeting to ask for funding. And at that point, we would, hopefully that coincides with MAPC's ability to work on the plan, and we would start, they would start working on it again after town meeting or right around that time, depending on if there's monies available in the, in what the town normally funds through them, that we may be able to get them started, waiting for the, waiting for the full funding at town meeting. So that's where we are, and that's sort of where we were going with that. We did send a letter to the Selectmen. Did they, did they get that Monday night, Larry, do you know? Or is they, will that be on their next, will that be on the next week?
No, this will be on next week.
To be Monday?
Yep, as corresponded.
So I did send a letter to the Board of Selectmen, Larry and I as part of this, asking for their concurrence on the, on moving ahead with updating of the master plan, so hopefully we'll have a letter back from them prior to going to Finance Committee with their backing for updating the master plan.
Is there a master plan before the 2003 one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you remember.
64?
Yeah, it was, it was out there.
Yeah, it's a comprehensive plan.
It, that one, you know, in going- It, that one, you know, in going to the 2003 plan, you know, there were certainly areas in there that needed, that needed updating and work. This one, you know, I think will be less in, you know, the abilities of towns and departments to comment. I think will be much more confined, just because we, you know, again, the comprehensive plan is geared towards how you're going to develop. Well, if you look at Milford, between what we already have in open space that isn't available and what's already built out, leaves us with very little that's available to effectively develop. And so the plan has, will have limitations. And again, it goes back to what I had spoken to in terms of trying to update those areas that we think really we're in a situation where it's more redevelopment than development.
Yep.
I have a question for you, Joe. In 2003, was UMass Amherst involved in comprehensive?
Yes.
They were.
If you read any of the stuff, although you don't have had time tonight.
Yeah, I remember them.
UMass and MAPC were.
They did, yeah, MAPC had gotten people from UMass involved, whether that's available or not going forward, but we did a lot, I think UMass probably did a lot of the interviewing and stuff, if I recall.
Yeah, their, what was it, the Environmental Institute, which was a consulting firm, in essence, of the graduate planning students and staff at UMass Amherst. That's the consulting firm that did our plan through MAPC.
All right. I thought that, I wasn't sure if that was the plan.
Yes.
So do we know if we can tap into that again, or?
I don't think that's available. I think what we're talking with them about now is about it, their technical program, technical assistance program, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Has anybody touched base with the Selectmen about this?
Yes, that's what.
We sent the letter out, so it will be.
Well, they haven't met yet. They're going to see it Monday night.
Okay.
And I didn't get a chance to talk to the chairman this morning, so maybe by Monday night.
I don't, I mean, I don't think, you know, I don't think they would come back with a, why are you doing this or a strict no. There may be questions, maybe we don't get a signed letter back saying, yes, we're in agreement, but, you know, and if that's the case and we need to go and talk to them, we can do that, but we're sort of, we, Larry and I were trying to make sure we covered our bases. We didn't want to surprise the Finance Committee with a request too close, so we tried to get that in as soon as possible. They asked us to come to their next meeting, which then caused us to say, well, let's send this to the Selectmen so they know what's going on too, but today hasn't been too much time to coordinate between all of them, so over the next week, we'll see how it washes out. But we have enough time, at least between now and when the Finance Committee would review it for actual approval of funding. This is more of a heads up to them, so they're aware it's on the radar, and there was a plan for us to move forward with that.
And part of the reason for looking at a fall town meeting for funding is that by that time, the amount of free cash available that go around would be available or be known or calculable, anyway. So our article would include transferring from available funds, not just appropriating new money. We'll take anybody's old money. We don't care. But you don't know where it all is until fall, so.
Right.
That works to our benefit.
Calculate everything out.
But I can't see that the Selectmen would not support doing it. It's just that they need to be formally made aware of it so they can formally say that.
It's sort of in line with what they've been thinking, anyway.
Yeah.
They have, especially where we're looking to focus on downtown.
Right.
Something that they're, that's part of their.
Yeah, this is, yeah, I can't, everybody has wanted this done, so, including us, so.
Yeah. One of the biggest things that we've done, I mean, Larry has a check sheet from the last one. We had, you know, what the main, what the main comments were in terms of what the town should do going forward, one of the main areas. And for those of you that have sat on town meeting floor, you'll know that a lot of open space has been transferred to the Conservation Commission. That was an outcome of the 2003 plan. That was one of the things that they said, so there's, and there's other things that we've done along the way, like try to keep track of those as to where we are from the 2003 plan to where we are now, which ones we've actually instituted along the way. So that is available, but, you know, certainly in updating the plan, we'll be able to get, we'll be able to erase a lot of those comments and go to the new comments and see where we are at that point in time.
Yeah, I can send the chart out of the implementation schedule as to what we've accomplished. I think some of you have already seen it, but I'll send it out, I'll email it out.
I think that's all we had, that I'm aware of.
Yep.
That'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Babe, second?
Second.
I'll let Chris second, because he has. Any further discussion?
I jumped in earlier.
All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous at five. Thank you and good night.